The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order, beginning with the Committee of the Hole. Do we have a motion for our other tenants?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker at the Committee of the Hole and City Council meetings of April 13, 2021. Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman.
Did you say Dave Parker?
Your Honor, I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. I'd like to make an amendment to add Dave Parker, Second Ward Alderman, please.
It's always the clerk's fault. Sorry about that.
Absolutely not. It was Moyer's fault. He, I'm sure it was on the paper. He just didn't read it.
It is on the paper.
Yeah, so we just had a little flaw there, but we've got, we've got you listed now until Alderman Moyer made the motion. Alderman Waldron made the second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker. Price don't work.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is a proclamation from the local realtors to declare April 2020 as Fair Housing Month.
Do you want to read the proclamation first, Jeanne?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. "Whereas safe and affordable housing is part of the American dream and a goal of all residents, and whereas individuals in the state of Illinois have the right to choose where to live, purchase or rent property without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, familial status, marital status, national origin, ancestry, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, unfavorable military discharge, and order of protection status. And whereas the talents of nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institutions, elected officials, state agencies, and others must be combined to promote and preserve integration, fair housing, and equal opportunity. And whereas realtors locally and nationally have incorporated affirmative fair housing practices into the Realtor Code of Ethics by which all realtors must abide. Now therefore Stephanie Acre, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Fair Housing Month." And Mayor, please, we have Sharon Stone here.
Sharon Smith. Would you like to address the council?
Well, thank you so much and thank you, Mayor Acre, for the Fair Housing Proclamation. As real estate professionals, realtors take the promotion of fair housing very seriously throughout the year. For us, every month is Fair Housing Month. Most of the ordinances, zoning, and legislative issues that we advocate for are rooted in the promotion of equal housing opportunities for all. To practice as a Realtor, an individual must provide equal professional services without regard to race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin, or sexual orientation of any prospective client, customer, or of a resident of any community. We must keep up to date on local, state, and federal fair housing laws, practices, improving clients and customers' opportunities in the Realtor's business. Develop advertising that indicates that everyone is welcome and no one is excluded, expanding consumer opportunities to see, buy, and lease property. Inform clients and customers about the rights and responsibilities under the fair housing laws by providing brochures and other information, and refuse to tolerate noncompliance. These are just a few of the principles Realtors abide by to promote fair housing. And in fact, Article 10 of the Code of Ethics compels all Realtors to conduct business in keeping with the spirit and the letter of the law. Again, thank you for recognizing Fair Housing Month and for the work you do representing the people of your city.
Thank you, Sharon. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? The agenda will be modified. We'll be removing item one, the renewal of the United States Postal Service Lease Parking Agreement that will be looked at later. And so we'll begin with the agenda. Item number two, it is the 2022 CMS bid for road salt. Brad Schick will be presenting this evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Wonderful. Yeah, so I'm seeking your authorization this evening to participate in Illinois CMS Road Salt Bid for next winter. We currently have about 3,000 tons of salt in our storage, and we would like to submit in the bid for 5,000 tons of salt. This is an 80%, a 120% bid program, which means we would have a minimum purchase of 80% or 4,000 tons, and a maximum purchase of 6,000 tons to 120%. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve, Schoonmaker.
Second, Went.
A motion by Alderman Schoonmaker, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Moyer.
Just a quick question. How much capacity do we have for storage?
Our total capacity is a little over 6,000. It's 6,150 tons.
So, so if we...
Between two domes.
We have 3,000 off. We ordered 5,000 more. Are we going to have a place to put it?
Yes, this actually, Alderman Moyer, we won't purchase this salt until 2022. Where this, with the 3,000 tons that we have, that will handle anything that occurs in November and December. And so this is actually a purchase that, purchasing that we would need to do in 2022. And it's purchased as we need it. So we order it 1,000 ton or 500 ton, whatever amount we want as needed.
Okay, Quan. I wanted to understand how that works. Thank you.
So I'm curious too, how much of this salt is used for other entities other than the city of Moline? So it looks like we intend to use 8,000. How much of that is planned for our partner entities?
I don't have that information. I know Brandon was working on kind of a report for that. I'm not sure if, did I have that information with me?
Do you know how much they use this year?
He was working on that report.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Item number three is Brant Construction Contract for 2021 Seal Coat Program. Joe Kuhl and Beck will be presenting this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, the Seal Coat Program that we have in front of you today is a project or a program we've been doing for a long time. I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention that we have had some, some challenges with this program, not only on the staff level, but on the performance level of the roads. And we are evaluating roads we've done in the past five or six years. We're gonna, we're gonna see how they hold up, what the, what the common denominators are on those roads that do well, that tend to fail. Also wanted to bring to council's attention the increase in price on this program over the last few years. Between 2019 and 2020, we saw a 10% increase in overall cost. And then again, this year we saw another 13% increase in overall cost. So staff is going to look at ways that we can implement this program, what's going to be best suited for the tax dollar. We do feel it's an important program. A seal coat roadways give us a, a pretty good surface road for less traveled, you know, roads and alleyways. But, but we may want to evaluate how we do it on some of our other roads. So we're trying to come up with a way to balance this and provide the best service. So I just wanted to get this in front of you guys and let you know we did bid the program and we will be looking to bring it back. Just if you guys have any questions, I'd like to answer those.
Motion to approve. Second?
Okay, so what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is just, I'll be bringing it back with some, with how we plan to utilize this program and the funds within it.
Do you understand that, Alderman Potter, that you're approving him bringing that back? Okay. And you understand your second? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Waldron.
So you don't intend to do, you don't intend to go with Brant at this point?
We're not gonna, we're not looking to approve a contract.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so that everybody knows what they're voting on. You're not voting on what was in the agenda. You're voting on a different recommendation from staff for them to take a pause and look at the application of this particular type of road repair. Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I just want to say, Joe, thank you very much for being diligent about this and looking into it. I know we've talked quite a bit about the Seal Coat and some of the issues we've had. So I appreciate you and your team analyzing this and making sure what's the best steps moving forward and looking forward to hearing what you guys come back with.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Went. It's a difficult program to analyze, really. It's a, you know, it's a, it's one step above a gravel road and it's a quantity-based program. But we do want to, with our costs going up and some of the challenges we've had, look into it a little bit further and bring it back.
Alderman Parker? Nope, he's good. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. And Jeanne, just, just to make sure, it's not what is in the agenda?
Right, understood. Thank you. They're going to be returning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item will also be presented by Joe this evening. It's the Five Cities Construction Contract for 2021 Sidewalk Program.
Yep, thank you, Your Honor. This, this project is one that, again, I need to clarify what we have here in the, in the agenda. I got a quick presentation just to go through and understand where we're going with it. Sidewalk program is a, is a very busy program. We, there's, we have more sidewalk in this town that needs our repair and we do our best to work with everybody to do it. In our 2021 CIP, we had a $50,000 ADA sidewalk compliance budget, $130,000 in our 75-25 program, and that additional $100,000 in our infill sidewalk program for a total of 280,000. So all three of these programs were bid under this one contract. So it's going to include our ADA upgrades, our 75-25 program, and our infill projects. It wasn't really clearly stated here. So we budgeted 280. Five Cities Construction Company was the lowest and responsible bidder at 254,975. So under budget from what we had anticipated. And I just will show you real quickly the three infill sidewalk sites we plan to do. This one is west of 19th Street. On the north side, it goes from the church through that parking lot and continues south to 24th Avenue Court. This will be an eight-foot wide sidewalk. We are working with the church. Some of their, some of their parking lot is on right away, so we're working with them to, to strike through the parking lot without having to change anything and save some money there. They've been a good partner with us to this point. It'll tie into the sidewalk to the north. That's our first infill location. Our second here will be on 34th Street between Avenue of the Cities and 24th Avenue. We have a lot of kids that, in order to get to school, come from the west between, in the residential areas of 24th Avenue and 30, 33rd, 32nd Street. Instead of them trying to cross 34th Street in the middle of the morning traffic into the high school, we are proposing we put a sidewalk on the west side going north to the intersection where they can cross at a, at a lighted intersection. There will be a small retaining wall there. One tree needs to be removed and a couple, couple things. This is a four-foot sidewalk off of, off of the back of Curve. And then here is our third sidewalk infill site on River Drive east of McLaughlin body over towards the new IH Mississippi Development down there on River Drive. So these are the locations for our infill as bid in this, in this contract, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer. Is there a second?
Second, Went.
We have a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Moyer.
The, I guess it was about a year and a half ago, we had some people come in and speak specifically about the one on, the sidewalk infill that, that's on 34th Street by Coolidge or across 34th Street from Coolidge. And this addresses that problem, so I'm really excited about it. As it's coming forward though, I know there's going to be a lot of interest in how they stay safe at the, and this will be an issue maybe with putting out cones or something. But at the gas station, cars come whipping in, in there. And so I, I know that there are going to be some residents that are upset about that, but this is definitely a, I just wanted to bring it up because it addresses that problem that was brought to us about a year ago. So I'm real happy that we're making progress there.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer. Alderman Waldron?
Joe, your slide about the, what is it now, 75-25 program on the... Traditionally, the city pays 75, the residents pay 25. But traditionally, we have a difficult time getting the 25% out of the folks. Would it be better to go ahead and try to find a systematic approach to, like Alderman Parker mentioned, a couple of weeks to find these trippers and fix these trippers rather than hope and rely on folks to come up with the 25% when they really generally don't? And if, I'd like your thoughts on that. And if we're going to stay and hope for the 25%, what happens to that 25% of money at the end of the year if it's not spent by the residents?
So the, the 25% is counted as revenue in the CIP, so that, that goes on top of revenue. We anticipate, we, we plan to spend the full 280 of this. The 75-25, if, if a resident is willing to pay the 25%, they get bumped to the top of this.
Right.
If, if, if we run through that group of residents, then we start going down and we pay 100% of the replacements, depending on, you know, evaluation by staff and location and mobilization, all those sorts of things. So, so we intend to spend it. It's just the 75-25 bumps, bumps the residents because they're, they're investing in it as well. And so we assist that way. The 130,000 will get spent. We'll, we'll run out of money before we, before we get to all the sidewalks we have identified already. But, but that's kind of how that system works. Absolutely, if we could get through and if we can identify our trippers more readily, I, I just, I'm not sure how we would go about that, but that's, that's a good idea. We definitely have more identified than we have the money to repair though in any one given year, especially since we skipped this program last year.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else? Alderman Waldron? Or I'm sorry, Alderman Went, forgive me.
Mike W., whatever it takes. Joe, you had mentioned that we're going to spend the full 280. The budget for what we were doing is, you know, the, or the bid was, was 255 or so. I know you and I had talked about it, just is your intent next week when you come back for the work session to talk about how maybe that additional money is, is going to be spent? Plus, we all know that we've got that extra 750,000 that's been budgeted for CIP about, that you'll be bringing that back next week and maybe used for some sidewalks or for some other projects coming up?
Yeah, so next week's meeting is our six-mile work session. Yeah, I do plan to bring additional items that we can spend out of 2021 CIP. If you guys remember, the 21 CIP was passed without all of the money being identified to where it's going to be spent. I also would like to identify some 2022 projects that we could get that advanced engineering on, so we're that year in advance. And then we've also come in under budget on a majority, actually, I think all of our CIP projects. So we're, we, we have additional funds there. So I want to give this council some ideas on which way they would like to direct staff to try to come up with ways to spend that money. Sidewalks is an easy way. There are several easy ways for us to do that and get that money spent. But I guess I would like some clarification from this council. Do you, do you want us to spend up to the contracted amount, up to the budgeted amount? That's a, that's a question we often have when we're passing contracts like this that come in. So whichever way we decide to go, or you guys decide to go, we could definitely spend this money on sidewalks.
Alderman Parker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Joe, yeah, I'd like to use the spend up to the budgeted amount, first of all. But second of all, I guess I never really understood. So we get into the 75-25%, 25% from the residents. How do we collect that? I mean, if they don't pay it, do we put a mechanic's lien on the property? Or do we just write it off? Or how serious do we get on the 25%?
Alderman, I'm not really sure. Alderman Parker, I, I would imagine they collect it upfront or, or during construction. I mean, I would imagine they work it like a...
They, they do. I've participated in it previously and the money is collected upfront, upfront before they do the project.
Okay.
Great. So, so we do actually collect that 25%?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Okay, good. Thank you.
Not sure, but yep, thank you.
Alderman Went, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Well, actually, based off of that, do we run into some situation, we, we spend all that money. We don't wait around if, if there aren't enough residents paying in. We still go out and, and fix things around town that we've identified, right? And spend that money?
Yep, correct. It was just 100% on the city at that point.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. The next item will be presented by Dirk Price. It's Rescinding Resolution 1050, 2020 Hiring Moratorium.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The, for you is resolution doing as the mayor said. Rescinding the prior moratorium resolution we passed about a year ago when we were in the, the height of the COVID consequences, where we were predicting the 6 or the 10 million. You're on the other side of it now. We've been anticipating, Alderman Waldron has been talking about April being the time when we would most need to start looking at hiring seasonals for the upcoming planning. We're in phase four. We're hoping to get to the bridge, which would allow us to do more things with more people, more places, which require more services. And so in anticipation of that, and with the good work that the council and Carroll have done to steward the resources, I think the time has come, talking to Marty and the rest of the staff, to put before you, removing the moratorium and going back to the usual personnel code.
Motion to approve.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Went. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Dirk. The next item will also be presented by Dirk. It is Amending Chapter 21, Nuisance in General, Section 21, 3101, Definitions of the Moline Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. I previewed this a few weeks ago at a meeting. These, this ordinance is intended to deal with some of the growing pains as we implement the vacant properties registration ordinance. That's been in place for about a year, a little less. And Brad Hauman, Amy Saunders, and I sat down with Marty and we walked through what some of the difficulties have been. A couple of them have been our, our commercial spaces that are between tenants have a property manager, but they don't check in and they didn't want to pay the fee. So what we've done is we, we want to have that name. You'll recall maybe the one where the ice broke the pipes on the roof. We knew about that well before the property manager, even though a property manager was assigned to that vacant tenancy. So we want to get them to register. They don't have to pay a fee, but they do have to register with us in that case. That way we have that contact information. We were searching for the property manager to help with that broken pipe. Another one is, I mentioned, there seems to be a, several structures throughout Moline where they're not exactly vacant. Nobody lives there, but they're visited routinely from time to time for different hobbies or occupations or woodworking or whatever. So they're maintained, they're not occupied, but they're not really vacant. So to clarify that, because it's a problem that occurs more frequently than one would have thought, we've clarified that to be, as long as you're keeping up the property standards, you don't have to be on the vacant property register. So those are the definitions. Those are the problems we're trying to correct, and we're recommending approval.
So move.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. We do not have an other this evening, and so we're going to move into public comment. We have one in-person public comment. I'd like to invite you to come up to our podium, please. And all you need to do is introduce yourself. And we do have a three-minute limit, just so you know. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Sparopoulos, and I have lived in Ward 3 for about a year. I'm here because two days ago, I was bringing my dog in from our morning walk when one of my neighbors approached me outside the building. Can you hear me now better? All right. In a hushed voice, she said, "There is a homeless person who is screaming on the second floor. I have called law enforcement and they are on their way." I became a bit cautious. I walked inside the building and saw a woman talking to herself in the common area of my apartment building. She wasn't screaming at the time. She wasn't threatening anyone, nor did she look homeless. She just seemed confused and perhaps a bit distressed. To be honest, I have no idea if she was indeed one of my neighbors or not, especially with the pandemic and everyone wearing masks. I do have a question for you all. EMTs and paramedics respond to physical health emergencies. In Moline, why do the police respond to mental health emergencies or crises? Other communities have solutions that perhaps work a bit better. I'm not an expert, but I did a bit of research and it seems that in Oregon, a successful program is called CAHOOTS. It's partnered with Eugene, Oregon's Police Fire Ambulance System since 1989. And 911 dispatchers are trained to recognize mental health crises and to send out mobile health crisis teams to the caller's location. The crisis teams consist of a mental health worker and a emergency medical technician or EMT. And the model works. Of the estimated 24,000 calls CAHOOTS responded to in 2019, only 311 required police backup. And in Eugene itself, they resolved almost 20% of all calls coming through the city's Public Safety Communication Center. The cost savings are also considerable. The CAHOOTS program budget is about 2 million annually, while the combined annual budgets for the Eugene and Springfield Police Departments are 90 million. The CAHOOTS program is a proven success for public safety, fiscal responsibility, and public health. Last year, the Moline Police Department responded to about 60,000 calls. How many of those calls could have been diverted to a mental health crisis response team? What could our police officers be doing with this additional time to protect us? What could you all be doing with additional funding? What are we doing to track these metrics? I have no personal affiliation with CAHOOTS. I do believe police are a necessary community resource and that we should support them. I personally have had only positive encounters with police officers in Moline and elsewhere. I'm here because I have battled depression myself for many years and know many others who've struggled with mental illness. Having a mental health response team in Moline would show that here, we support people with mental illnesses. We do not criminalize them. I have brought a few copies of the CAHOOTS Media Guide, and they explain the program and explain some resources available to communities like Moline that could adopt the program. I hope that you will consider my request. Is there any questions?
No, that's wonderful. And normally, I mean, we don't normally respond when someone gives a public comment just so that we don't appear to be argumentative. I'm so grateful that you've come and spoken. But I would like to invite Chief Gault, if you're done with your comments, and we, I'd like your copies and then we can distribute them to the council. Or if you have enough for all the council, you can hand them to Alderman Moyer and he can pass them around. But Chief Gault, I would like for you to take this opportunity to kind of use it as a, a way to communicate what's happening with our social worker partnership and the recent grant, because I think the community needs to know what's happening there. So if you could just give us a few minutes and...
Sure, thanks for the opportunity. Well, ma'am, I appreciate your comments. Ironically, Chief Snyder and I have been in long and in-depth conversations about different services that we could provide. Unfortunately, the state of Illinois is actually mandated to provide mobile crisis response in the field, and that already exists, and it's actually not working very well. So we have been looking and talking about things, but there are significant hurdles. And I don't want to enter into Chief Snyder's arena, but IDPH and the way the ambulance services work in the state of Illinois are much different than Eugene, Oregon. The Moline Police Department has been aggressive in trying to find alternative solutions. We currently have multiple social workers on staff through the Center for Youth and Family Solutions. Those social workers are deployed into the field on multiple occasions. They ride with police officers in our peak times, our mental health crisis. Some of the stats that you had referenced with Eugene, Oregon, the Moline Police Department responded to over 600 mental subject calls, as well as an additional about 300 suicidal subject calls. And while I'm not in disagreement with the comments from the public, unfortunately, the solutions aren't quite as easy in the state of Illinois, nor are the resources in our community. There is only one... There is only one mental health service provider in the Quad City area, and that is at capacity almost on a daily basis. So there, this is a much bigger conversation beyond the city of Moline for our region. But I am pleased to report to the council that the city of Moline has been very proactive in alternatives, as well as we already have a meeting scheduled next week with Robert Young Center and Unity Point Health with the Metro Chiefs at our, our weekly chiefs meeting. So hopefully, some things will come out of that to try to get some better resources from our mental health providers in the community.
Chief, how many referrals have you had to social support?
Yeah, so from August, mid-August, when we began the program that was authorized by, by the council, to the end of last year, we had referred over 500 cases to that social service team. Since then, we've almost eclipsed 300 just in the first four months of 2021. So it's a, it, the volume is considerable. And they've already increased staff that CYFS provides to us, as well as we received, CYFS received a grant from Heidi Hughes Camp. They have received a $100,000 grant. So we're already looking to expand that into additional vulnerable populations and working on some great things for social services in the city of Moline.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to kind of share an update for the whole community to understand that we do recognize it as an important issue and are working towards a better solution. Thank you so much for bringing that, that important issue to, to our attention. Thank you, Amanda. Could I get your last name? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And it's Heidi Hughes Camp Collins. She'll be sad if we drop the Collins.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Janine, could you read our other public comment, please?
Yes, we have a public comment from Joel Reiser and the citizens of 14th Street and about 34th Avenue. Mr. Reiser says, "We are disappointed with the roadwork on 14th Street. Not only did the road fail, but we deal with an incredible amount of dust every day. I take great pride in my property and the dust is wrecking thousands of dollars in landscaping. Their attempts at fixing troubled spots are not working. The areas around the patches fail as a result. In conclusion, we and our neighbors feel the city should have installed a traditional curb and gutter cement road like the rest of the streets in Moline. We pay taxes like everyone else and deserve a paved road."
Thank you. Thank you. And just for context, that's what we were talking about in the item that, that we're gonna bring back before council to make sure that when we do an application like that, it's an appropriate site for it. So, thank you very much. Is there any further business for committee of the whole? Hearing none, we're going to close out of committee of the whole, go into the council agenda. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance and follow with an invocation by Alderman Parker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many gifts you have provided to our city. We ask that you provide calm for the civil unrest, both locally and throughout our country at this time. Also ask for a seamless transition, as several new elected officials will join the council soon. And of course, we ask for your protection of our healthcare providers and first responders as they continuously put our residents and visitors' needs in front of their own safety. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Wentz?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoemaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of March 30th, 2021. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3004-2021, an ordinance amending chapter 11, fire prevention and protection of the Moline Code of ordinances by amending section 11-1101 F10721, test and inspection records. Council Bill 3005-2021, an ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of ordinances by amending appendix 31, snow routes. Council Bill 3006-2021, an ordinance amending chapter 3, advertising and signs of the Moline Code of ordinances, section 3-2105, signs allowed on private property with and without permits by repealing table 3, 2105-1 in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new table 3-2105-1 relating to the same subject matter. Resolutions. Council Bill 1080-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase three mowers and two utility vehicles and a V plow from Prairie State Tractor LLC with an amount of $105,039.54. Council Bill 1081-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase four solar electric aero board trailers from Traffic and Parking Controls Company for the amount of $22,648. Council Bill 1082-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase two Western V plows with installation from Bonnell Industries Dixon, Illinois for the amount of $14,180. Council Bill 1083-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase five hook lift systems from Swaploader USA Limited for the amount of $104,701.80. Council Bill 1084-2021, a resolution declaring city-owned vehicle, a 2008 Dodge Caravan, vehicle identification number 1D4HN11H18B168036 as surplus property. Council Bill 1085-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase three 2021 Ford Escape S sport utility vehicles from Sexton Ford Moline, Illinois for the amount of $63,450. Council Bill 1086-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase two 2022 Ford F250 XL 4x4 pickup trucks from Sexton Ford Moline, Illinois for the amount of $65,863. Council Bill 1087-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase seven 2022 Freightliner cab and chassis with complete central hydraulic system installation from Bonnell Industries Dixon, Illinois for the amount of $1388,187. Council Bill 1088-2021, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to resolution 1051-2020 to hire a mechanic, too. Council Bill 1089-2021, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to resolution 1051-2020 to hire a resident construction inspector. Council Bill 1090-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a complete streets policy, setting forth goals and standards for developing a safe, reliable, efficient, integrated, and connected multimodal transportation system within the city of Moline, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to implement the complete streets policy for use by staff, consultants, developers, et cetera, to ensure the application of the complete streets policy to all city projects. Council Bill 1091-2021, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to resolution 1051-2020 to hire an environmental manager. Council Bill 1092-2021, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to resolution 1051-2020 to hire one permanent utilities field worker and one temporary utilities field worker. Council Bill 1093-2021, a resolution authorizing a variance to chapter 34, Water and Sewers, section 3300, when required, of the Moline Code of ordinances, to grant a variance to section 34, Water and Sewers, section 3300, when required, if the Moline Code of ordinances waiving the, of the Moline Code of ordinances waiving the requirement of the, at this time of 3706, 9th Avenue to connect to the public sanitary sewer, granting the petitioner permission to repair the septic system until such time as the sanitary sewer immediately joins said property and as condition of approval, requiring the petitioner and successors and assigns to agree to connect to the sanitary sewer at such time as the sanitary sewer immediately joins said property and to pay at that time the equitable, equitable share of such public main extension attributable to said property and to record said obligations against the property. Council Bill 1094-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a legal services agreement with the Driscoll Law Firm for claims associated with PFAS contamination. Council Bill 1095-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a second extension of a lease agreement with the Donald R. Beeler Family Limited Partnership LP.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Parker. Second, Wentz.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, second by Alderman Wentz. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, there's no discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wentz?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1096-2021, a resolution authorizing the municipal services general manager to submit a commitment for bidding road salt with the Illinois Department of Central Management Services for 5,000 tons that would commit the city to purchase a minimum of 4,000 tons and the ability to purchase up to 6,000 tons for the 2021, 2022 winter season.
Motion to approve 1096, 2021, Parker. Second, Wentz.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Wentz. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wentz?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1097-2021, a resolution rescinding resolution 1051, 2020, which placed a moratorium on hiring and promotion.
Motion to approve 1097, 2021. Second, Wentz.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Wentz. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call. Oh, Alderman Parker.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the department heads for your patience over this last year in trying to, you know, help us navigate through these very difficult and unknown waters. I know it's difficult when you had to, you know, think of every person that you had to hire and every position that you had to hire. But you did a great job, and, and through it, I think we, it made us a stronger city. Also, I want to point out, I don't think we ever turned anybody down on, on a hire. So it was well thought out, and all these hires were very important. So thank you to all the department heads.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wentz?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
First reading ordinances. Council Bill 3007-2021, an ordinance amending chapter 4, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of ordinances, section 4-3208, license fees. Council Bill 3008-2021, an ordinance amending chapter 3, advertising and signs, sections 3-1103 and 3-1104, and chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic, section 20-6109 of the Moline Code of ordinances regarding pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Janine. So we will now go around the room for any additional council business. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Wentz?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thanks. Alderman Waldron? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Schoemaker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to thank Joe, his staff, and Rod Schiff for their information they provided on the five-year snow cost report that you would have gotten an email from Rod. I think it was a very interesting document and bears out what I was talking about, that yes, we maybe provided a better service to our citizens and we kept asking at what cost. And you can see from the 2021, we spent 1.1 million this year for snow removal for 28 snow days and 42 inches of snow.